President's comments. I also want to congratulate Wallace Middle School and the other schools of distinction. It was a great event. The kids were kind of shocked. We announced it, I think it was Regan? And someone heard them say "Woo-hoo!" In the hallway, so they were pretty excited. I reached out to HR in concerns with the survey for the superintendent search ended, I do believe, December the 6th. So I received something from HR and it says a comprehensive summary. As of today, JG Consultant informed us that we have a total of fourteen applicants. Once the board and our office collaboratively decide when to close the recruitment in the new year, we will move forward with qualifying applicants and work with JG Consultant on developing and examination. So just so that you guys know, the survey did close and we're going to meet with HR beginning of the new year to figure out when we would like to close the recruitment process to start moving forward. They're going to close the job announcements, find the qualified and non-qualified applicants, notify the non-qualified applicants of the civil service appeal process. The applicants have seven days from notification to appeal. So Human Resource sends invitations to the examination to all qualified candidates. HR updates the Board of Ed. Candidates then pass the exam, were placed on the eligibility list in rank order, and the board will interview to be determined by the board. So that's where we're standing right now. So in the new year, we will continue on with the process with HR. I also like to thank Waterbury Career Academy for inviting me to their holiday event which helps the senior class for the following year to raise funds. It was a craft show. A lot of kids were there. If you get a chance next year, please attend. You get to make all kinds of fancy things for the holiday. Bracelets and your own mugs. You print your, you know, put a picture or whatever on the mug. It was a really good turnout for them. So next year, if you have an opportunity, they need to really advertise it a little more though, because I don't believe too many people knew about it other than the school base. But it was a great event, so I would encourage you guys to go and support next year. I also met with the school-based clinic subcommittee and they informed me that the Sheet Rock is going up at Driggs. They hired another clinician for the school-based health clinic. Moving along, they would like to build an advisory board of teachers, parents, school liaisons. So if you're interested and you live in the Driggs area, by all means, contact the principal. Probably beginning of next year when things are really up and moving. I would also like to say I hope everyone enjoys the holiday. Please be safe and come back next year ready to knuckle down and do great things as always. Item eight, student representative comments.
Good evening, Mayor Pernaruski, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano, Dorno, our Board of Education Commissioners, and our student representatives. Tonight, want to highlight a few moments of great distinction over the past few weeks in Waterbury Public Schools. And starting that, it was with schools of distinction. Chase, Kingsbury, and Regan Elementary Schools have been identified as schools of distinction based on their 23-24 Next Generation Accountability System results. Waterbury is the only district in our district reference group to have three schools of distinction. And I was happy to be joined by Mayor Pernaruski and President Hernandez to go to the schools and surprise and present the banners to each school so they can hang it proudly and let everybody know when they walk in they are schools of distinction. We held a legislative roundtable in conjunction with the Board of Education, Executive Cabinet, and Mayor's Office that will be on December 9th. The purpose of the discussion was to update our local legislators on the state of the district and current needs, goals, and priorities for the upcoming legislative session. And I want to give a shout out to the Willbe Culinary students and Kurt Palladino over there who made a delicious breakfast for all of the attendees. The district was also the host to the Cave Area One Legislative Breakfast at Crosby High School on December 11th. Area superintendents and Board of Education members joined local legislators for a very similar discussion on the legislative topics that are not only important to Waterbury Public Schools but also local and regional superintendents. And I want to give a special shout out to Mayor Pernaruski and President Hernandez for attending. Vice President Brown, Commissioner Van Stone attended as well. And with the Legislative Breakfast at Willbe, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Commissioner Van Stone, Commissioner Orso, and Commissioner Jackson were also in attendance. So it was a great opportunity, great representation by the Board of Education and our legislators to discuss topics for the upcoming legislative session. Thank you to Commissioner Van Stone for helping put that together. We appreciate you choosing Waterbury Public Schools to also highlight what we do here as a system. This was a great event at Wallace. I was able to go with, again, Mayor Pernaruski and President Hernandez to Wallace School because Wallace School is off of turnaround. They went from a category five to a category three, so we were able to go there on December 11th and congratulate the staff, have a sit-down meal with them, and thank them for all of their hard work and expected continued growth over the next few years. But we were also able to go to see the students, have a special lunch made, so thanks to food services for making a special lunch for the students, have a banner made for the school to be able to hang. And the mayor was kind enough to also put in a rec for the students to all get ice cream tomorrow. So all the students in Wallace will be getting ice cream, which was a fan favorite, of course. And it's important to note the kids were asking for his autograph before he promised ice cream. So it was, it was good. PJ Day. DJ Adam Rivers from Kiss 95.7 and KC 101.3 delivered Duncan to the staff and visited Bunker Hill and Tinker Elementary Schools on December 13th to promote PJ Day for the kids in honor of Connecticut Children's Foundation. Thank you to everyone for bringing in a dollar to contribute. We did this across the district. This is to support children who are battling cancer. And I dug this up today because they said, as I was looking through this information, the top ten districts get a banner. We were, for the top ten districts, who raised the most money. We were District 11 by $43. I wish I knew that. But that is even more motivation next year. We will be in the top ten and break that. The Waterbury Public Schools is amazing at giving back to our local community, whether it's Waterbury or the state. So to be 11th in the state, we should still be proud. And VFW, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, hosted a Patriots Pen Essay Contest for students in grades six to eight with the theme "My Voice in America's Democracy." Students were asked to write an essay about their voice in America's democracy. We had a first-place winner from the Academic Academy, Jeremiah De Leon, won first place and was awarded a $500 scholarship. Gil Martin student Alex Hernan Merchant Nieves won second place and received an award of $400. Kelly Croch, teacher at Gil Martin, was also selected as the VFW 2025 Teacher of the Year. So congratulations to all the students and for our very own teacher for that award. And finally, I just want to remind everyone that, I'm sure nobody knows that, after tomorrow we are on winter break officially, and we will be on winter break from December 23rd to January 1st. We return to school on January 2nd, and I want to wish everyone a very happy holiday, wonderful new year, opportunity to rest up and rejoice with friends and family. And a special thanks to our WHAM students tonight who came prior to the board meeting to sing and play the piano, Jahim, Nyla, Erica, Billy, and Sophia. Thank you so much for taking your time. They also have a concert tonight at 7:00 if anybody has moved to go to that at the Palace Theater. And I also want to thank Willbe Culinary for putting together a festive cupcake for all the board members and for anyone that has a child in the audience that wants a cupcake. They're over there on the right table, so go ahead and grab them before you leave. Thank you to Willbe Culinary and Kirk Palladino for doing that for the board members. And I want to wish everyone again a happy holidays.
I also want to congratulate Wallace Middle School and the other schools of distinction. It was a great event. The kids were kind of shocked. We announced it, I think it was Regan? And someone heard them say "Woo-hoo!" You know, in the hallway, so they were pretty excited. I reached out to HR in concerns with the survey for the superintendent search ended, I do believe, December the 6th. So I received something from HR and it says a comprehensive summary. As of today, JG Consultant informed us that we have a total of fourteen applicants. Once the board and our office collaboratively decide when to close the recruitment in the new year, we will move forward with qualifying applicants and work with JG Consultant on developing and examination. So just so that you guys know, the survey did close and we're going to meet with HR beginning of the new year to figure out when we would like to close the recruitment process to start moving forward. They're going to close the job announcements, find the qualified and non-qualified applicants, notify the non-qualified applicants of the civil service appeal process. The applicants have seven days from notification to appeal. So Human Resource sends invitations to the examination to all qualified candidates. HR updates the Board of Ed. Candidates then pass the exam, were placed on the eligibility list in rank order, and the board will interview to determine, to be determined by the board. So that's where we're standing right now. So in the new year, we will continue on with the process with HR. I also like to thank Waterbury Career Academy for inviting me to their holiday event which helps the senior class for the following year to raise funds. It was a craft show. A lot of kids were there. If you get a chance next year, please attend. You know, you get to make all kinds of fancy things for the holiday. Bracelets and your own mugs. You print your, you know, put a picture or whatever on the mug. It was a really good turnout for them. So next year, if you have an opportunity, they need to really advertise it a little more though, because I don't believe too many people knew about it other than the school base. But it was a great event, so I would encourage you guys to go and support next year. I also met with the school-based clinic subcommittee and they informed me that the Sheet Rock is going up at Driggs. They hired another clinician for the school-based health clinic. Moving along, they would like to build an advisory board of teachers, parents, school liaisons. So if you're interested and you live in the Driggs area, by all means, contact the principal. Probably beginning of next year when things are really up and moving. I would also like to say I hope everyone enjoys the holiday. Please be safe and come back next year ready to knuckle down and do great things as always. All right. Item eight, student representative comments.
So the students at Crosby High School have accomplished some amazing things so far this year. Although it hasn't been easy, we've all adjusted really well to the yonder pouch, yonder pouches. I use mine daily, and I can say it's definitely changed the way people are in the classroom so far as engagement and talking to the teachers, talking to classmates, and all collaborating in class. Grade nine, 10, 11, 12 students have recently completed the PSAT and SAT. One of our grade 12 students actually scored a 1450 on her SAT, which is really exciting. And we had over 18 students score over 1,100 points on the SAT, and we are very proud of them. In early college high school, we are proud to say we finally have our full four cohorts of students. So we're all full. We have freshmen, sophomore, juniors, and seniors, me being part of the senior class this year. In addition to doing extremely well in the classroom, our National Honor Society also just hosted a gingerbread event, which was also to raise money to pay our dues and then prepare for the next class of National Honor Society for next year. It was nice to welcome some of you at the Cave Legislative Breakfast last week. Our JRTC cadets and student council representatives were a big help in leading people to the library, and we also all got to sit front row and really hear about what's going on. It was really inspiring to sit there and be able to hear what's going on in the district and have be able to ask our own questions and what we can do to help. Our grade nine students are off to a great start. Almost 90% of them are on track so far to graduate and receive all their credit for this year. After COVID, we've noticed more students than ever in the last two years are coming to school, and attendance has been doing really well here at Crosby. We are so excited that our seniors are already becoming, being accepted into college. I actually, today, when I got home from after school with the Earth Day Club meeting, went home and opened a letter from Long Island University, and I was accepted. So just this week, we are in the middle of a spirit week. It's awesome to see the entire school participate and come together to do something that everyone will enjoy. For example, tomorrow's pajama day, so I hope everyone will be in pajamas, even the teachers. I would also like to give a shout out to our community partners, CJR, CHMA, Angelina's Pizza, Dunkin' Donuts, Ion Bank, Post University, and many more. Thank you for everything that you guys do for us. So many great things are happening at our school constantly, and now Aiden will share a few more things about what is happening related to Crosby High School and athletics and activities.
Good evening, Mayor Pernaruski, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Board of Education Commissioners, and Interim Superintendent Dr. Schwartz. My name is Aiden Mejia, and I am also representing Crosby High School and early college high school program. I play for the Crosby High School tennis team, and I am a dedicated member of both Life Smarts and DECA. I'm very excited to be a Crosby representative for the next two years. And we are excited to share some news related to Crosby Athletics and Activities. In sports, we just had an awesome night at Crosby. We celebrated 50 years at the Crosby Palace and specifically Crosby Basketball. We had an awesome presentation and a basketball game filled with former players to celebrate the occasion. Special shout out to Coach Argelli, who practically won a million games as our coach. We had a successful fall sports season. One of our football players, Jaden Cobb, has been nominated as the Sports Illustrated Connecticut Football Player of the Year. Please vote for him on SI.com by December 31st. Our volleyball and soccer teams have won multiple games, and with our brand new fitness center, are already working out for the next year. Here in the winter, we've had an exceptional turnout for our winter sports. The boys and girls basketball teams are off to a great start, and our indoor track season has recently begun. Our boys' basketball team had an undefeated fall basketball season, and we hope to see them win the fourth state championship in Crosby history. In addition to sports, we have had many activities taking place. One that we are really excited about is Winter Fest. Winter Fest will be taking place in February. Winter Fest is an opportunity for parents, students, and staff to come together and have a good time. There's food, games, music, and many different activities for families and students to enjoy. Rumor has it that we are getting a taco truck, and I'm very excited for that. In the weeks to come, we look forward to many things. We'll be taking our midterms exams starting the second week of January and hope to convince Mr. Varanote to allow us to have another school-wide pep rally to celebrate all of our accomplishments. We hope all of you know that many of these amazing things going on at Crosby would not be possible without your support.
Good evening, Mayor Pernaruski, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Board of Education Commissioners, and Interim Superintendent Dr. Schwartz. So my name is Dante Myers. I'm a senior at Crosby, and I also work at Ion Bank. I work at the school branch. And I recently, thanks to all the programs we have here at Crosby, thanks to my amazing guidance counselors, just got accepted into UConn's doors. And I really appreciated serving on the Waterbury Board of Education for the last two years. I love Crosby, too. It has opened up many opportunities for me that I couldn't get at any other school. Coming from New York in my freshman year, I could never, in a million years, have dreamed about working at a bank in my own school or even getting any experience. But one important thing that I would like to mention is that I would love for the district to explore more job opportunities for seniors. I've had a great experience through Ion Bank, and it led me to a job after school and during the summer. So I would just want to say, like, imagine working for two hours after school and then going, working five hours on a job that would set us up on a career. We'd like to see increased opportunities for students to have a job on training and other work-related experiences. We thank you for your consideration and look forward to our continued work together.
Congratulations to you both for being accepted. It's just colleges. It's great. Item number nine, Committee on School Personnel, Commissioner Orso.
Good evening. Thank you. First of all, student representatives, what a fantastic job you're doing, and keep up the good work. 9.1, I moved at the Board of Education, approved the appointment of Jalissa Crespo as elementary school principal, Hopeville School, effective immediately.
Discussion. Dr. Schwartz?
Thank you. Jalissa Crespo is a phenomenal educator. She's worked here in Waterbury Public Schools for 20 years. She was previously the vice principal of Hopeville School, and she did a phenomenal job filling in when the Hopeville principal took over Gil Martin School. So she's been filling in as the interim principal there since the beginning of the year. She's worked in the district in several different capacities, including as a bilingual teacher and has served many different roles, all with poise, all with grace, all with accolades from her colleagues. And so it is my pleasure to recommend to you Jalissa Crespo as principal for Hopeville
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Ms. Crespo.
Good evening, Mayor Pernaruski, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Board of Education Commissioners, Board of Student Representatives, and Interim Superintendent Dr. Schwartz. I would like to begin by expressing my deepest gratitude for this opportunity to address you all tonight. This is a moment of great significance for me, and I'm honored to be here. Let me introduce myself. My name is Jalissa Crespo. I was born in the Dominican Republic and came to this country not knowing the language or the culture at the age of seven. My parents, immigrants in search of a better life, came to this country without a formal education but with a deep understanding of the importance of family, values, and hard work. These core values have guided me throughout my life and continue to aspire my work in education. I have had the privilege of being an educator for over 20 years in the city of Waterbury. And throughout my career, I have, I have been passionate about providing students with the opportunities, the support, and the language skills they need to succeed. I decided to pursue a career in education because I wanted to be a part of a system that empowers children to overcome the challenges, reach their full potential, and pursue their dreams, just as I was able to do with the support of many dedicated teachers throughout my life. In my previous role as the supervising vice principal at Hopeville, I had the privilege of working closely with an incredible team of staff, students, and parents. Through our collective efforts, I helped establish a school culture and climate that values and respects diversity. This work was not just about fostering inclusivity, but about also creating an environment where every individual feels seen, heard, and supported. As I step into this new role as principal, I am committed to ensuring that every student in Hopeville School has access to the resources and guidance they need to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. I look forward to working with teachers, staff, family, and the community to continue working our school to a place where every student feels valued and supported. I would like to thank Dr. Schwartz for this recommendation and the Board of Education for their consideration of this appointment. I also would like to thank my husband that's here tonight, my brother, my sister-in-law, and my best friend that are here also tonight.
Have them stand. Commissioner Orso, item 9.2.
Item 9.2, I moved at the Board of Education, approved the appointment of Michael LeBach as elementary school vice principal, Reed School, effective immediately.
Second. Discussion, Dr. Schwartz?
Thank you, President Hernandez. Mr. LeBach is an outstanding educator with 20 years of experience in the Waterbury Public Schools. Throughout his career, Michael has held a variety of roles, including special education teacher, homebound tutor, after-school program administrator, summer school administrator, interim vice principal at Reed. Mr. LeBach's dedication to student success has earned him well-deserved recognition, including being named Bunker Hill Teacher of the Year in 2011 and Waterbury Career Academy Teacher of the Year in 2020. It is, he has a passion for supporting students and their commitment to growth. Fun fact, it is the first classroom I ever visited in the Waterbury Public Schools, believe it or not, over 12 years ago, when he was working in the BDLC at Bunker Hill. I recommend Michael LeBach as the vice principal of Reed Elementary School.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. LeBach.
I'm sorry, this is a little emotional. I didn't expect that. Mayor Pernaruski, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Secretary Adorno, Board of Education Commissioners, Board of Ed Student Representatives, and Interim Superintendent Dr. Darren Schwartz. I had a pretty long-winded speech prepared. I'm going to change that up. First, I want to say to Dr. Schwartz, thank you. Thank you for recognizing me. Thank you for the opportunity. Dr. Johnson, Mr. Mendoza, thank you. Dr. Padua is not here. He was an incredible mentor of mine. Mr. Albini is here. Thank you. Ms. Gope, I love you. Thank you. I love my staff, my mother. Everything I do is for my family right there. They are my world, my rock. My wife has stepped in while I worked three straight jobs to try to gain experience to get to this position in my life. So 12 hours a day, and she was home raising three little boys, and she did an incredible job. I do have an open mic, and I do get to talk about Mr. Brown. I will sell his story to the highest bidder. I have no problem with that. Mr. Brown, I love you. You're family. You're incredible. I cannot ever thank you for that five minutes when you saw the potential that I've been waiting for someone to see. To my sons, daddy made it. Reed Rockets will always rise to the top. We're changing things and making incredible moves. I cannot wait for you guys to attend January 9th. Thank you. I love my family. I love my staff. Thank you to every mentor that has helped me get to this point.
Can you have your family and your amazing staff and your principals stand up and be recognized?
And Mr. Mr. LeBach, can you introduce your mom to everyone?
Many of you may know my mother. She's a two-time Teacher of the Year for the city of Waterbury. She retired, what, about nine years ago? Seven years ago, sorry. She'll let you know that she loves Dr. Schwartz. She tells me every day, Mr. Mendoza was her student in class. She couldn't wait to figure out who Dr. Johnson was. So that was a big deal for her. She worked at Wallace Middle School, Wilson School, Title I reading, Spanish teacher, second-grade teacher, and an incredible mother for three children that are so grateful to her.
Thank you.
I just want to say I had Ms. LeBach in Wallace Middle School. Item 9.3, Commissioner Orso.
Thank you. Item 9.3, I moved at the Board of Education, approved the appointment of Benjamin Germain as elementary school vice principal, State Street School, effective immediately.
Second.
Second. Discussion, Dr. Schwartz.
Thank you, President. Mr. Jermaine brings 13 years of experience within the Waterbury Public School District, and Ben has served various roles throughout his career here, including PE and health teacher at State Street, teaching vice principal, recreation supervisor for the city, most recently interim vice principal at State Street. In 2009, Ben was honored at State Street, as State Street's Teacher of the Year, a testament to his dedication to both students and colleagues. He's known for his kind and committed nature. Ben has earned the respect and admiration of those he works with. We are excited for Ben to continue his leadership at State Street, and I am pleased to recommend him as vice principal.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Good evening, Mayor Pernarowski, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Adorno, Board of Education Commissioners, Board of Education Student Representatives, and Interim Superintendent Dr. Schwartz. I am honored to be here as the newly appointed vice principal of State Street School. This is a moment I have been seeking, and I am extremely grateful to have the opportunity to serve the Waterbury community. I was hired as a physical education and health teacher at State Street School 13 years ago. With the guidance of tremendous leadership at State Street, I've been fortunate enough to find an opportunity to grow as a leader within the same school that granted me the first opportunity that I had as an educator. Having the opportunity to grow within the only school I have known for my entire career is an honor and a dream. State Street is a unique place that I have grown to love. We serve as a school for students to have the opportunity to learn and grow in a small but supportive environment outside of a traditional school setting. Students K through 12 with varying disabilities are offered the opportunity to see school through a different lens and grow as individuals both behaviorally and in their academics. As I continue to serve in this role, I am committed to making a meaningful impact on our students and the community as a whole. As I have served this school and this community for 13 years, I look forward to having the opportunity to serve for many more. Thank you again for this opportunity, and have a great night.
Consent calendar, 10.1, Committee of the Whole, request approval of the 25-26 school year calendar. 10.2, Committee of the Whole, request approval of the educational specifications for the proposed Driggs School, Driggs Elementary School Elevator Project. 10.13, request approval of the educational specifications for the purpose of Generali Elementary School Elevator Project. 10.4, request approval of the educational specifications for the following proposed Tinker Elementary School Elevator Project. 10.5, request approval of the educational specifications for the following proposed Wilson Elementary School Elevator Project. 10.6, request approval of Rotella Intermag, Inter-District Magnet Schools Operation Plan. 10.7, request approval of the revised discipline school conduct policy number 5114. 10.8, request approval of the revised tuition rate schedule. 10.9, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. 10.10, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waivers. Commissioner O'Brien, may I have a motion?
I motion to approve consent calendar items 10.1 through 10.10 as read.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Committee on Finance, Commissioner Orso.
Thank you, Madam President. Item 12.1, I moved at the Board of Education, approve a grant agreement with Ready CT for funding for a first robotics program.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 13, Committee on Grievance, Commissioner Serrano Adorno.
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, I move that Waterbury Teachers Association, WTA grievance 23-24-04, heard by the committee on December 3rd, 2024, be denied.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Commissioner Serrano Adorno.
Ladies and gentlemen, I move that Waterbury Teachers Association grievance 24-25-01, heard by the committee on December 3rd, 2024, be denied.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Interim Superintendent's notification to the board, Commissioner Van Stone, may I have a motion?
Motion to receive and place on file, interim superintendent's notification to board, item 14.1 through 14.9 as listed.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Unless we have some committee reports. Oh, motion's been made in second. We are adjourned.
Feliz Navidad.
Stop that train.
Prospero año.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.